All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, he's joining us virtually, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilman Costello just stepped out of the room, but he's representing the 11th District. There goes Councilman Costello. Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representing the Office of the President, I see Preston in the background, representing the Office of the President, and representing the Mayor's Office, I see Sophia. Yes, Sophia, and I see Nina's on virtually and will be here. This afternoon, we have a hearing for Bill LO 21-0009, Baltimore City Fire Department, EMT Paramedic Pre-Employment Screening and Hiring Process for the Purpose of Requiring the Fire Chief and their Designee to Present Information on the Overall Recruitment, Pre-Employment Screening, and Hiring Process for Emergency Medical Technician and Paramedic Positions for the Prior Fiscal Year as Mandated in Article 9, Section 1 through 9, Reporting Requirements of the Baltimore City Code. This bill is introduced on June 14, 2021, and was sponsored by myself. I'll say, just very briefly, we've been focused on this issue for quite some time, and I think it is helpful that we continue to do so. We've seen shortages across the city and all of our agencies, and I think because we've been having this consistent conversation, the Fire Department, I think it's going to help us in the long term. So with that, we're going to hear from agency representatives, starting, of course, and only, of course, hearing from the Fire Department. So I will turn it over to the Fire Department.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Wood, Director of HR for the Fire Department. And I'll be reviewing the hiring and recruitment for EMT and paramedic for the last fiscal year. So first, I'd like to review the recruitment and application process that we went through. Okay? So we had several postings over the year, approximately three to four postings. The last was a continuous posting that lasted for 90 days. We received a total of 1,032 applications for both positions. Now, out of those applications, we only had 301 that met the minimum qualifications for the position. So what that means, as you hopefully know, that these positions are positions that require the applicants to be already certified, meaning they have to have an EMT certification or a paramedic certification. So we had a number of people apply that didn't already have their EMT or paramedic certifications, so therefore, they could not be considered for the process. So after that, once we go through those that actually have that, and we reach out to them, we find out who really wants to be considered for the process. And from that, we asked them to come and go through the physical agility tests, meet the background process, et cetera. And from that, we went down to only 54 coming and passing the PAT process for those three postings. And then we had, from that, 19 that were city residents, and 24 were minority candidates. Of that, we hired 26 EMTs and seven paramedics. So for the last fiscal year, we hired a total of 33 EMT and paramedics. I'm not sure if you were given a copy of the demographic information. Oh, you have that one, okay.
That's what we have up here.
Yeah. So on it, you can see that we had the, we still have one class in progress. So we totaled 32, because one that was hired then dropped out, unfortunately, right at the beginning. So we totaled hired, 16 were city residents, 18 were women, 18 were white, 12 were black, one Asian, one Hispanic.
Can you remind me how many you guys started out with, again?
54.
Okay.
So from that 54, to get down to the 32, obviously, a number may have failed the medical examination, some may have withdrawn from the process once they started in the process, some may have failed the background check as we move forward. So ultimately, we end up hiring the 32 people. Okay. So in that process, of course, we do a regular routine recruitment campaign throughout the year. We use social media a lot. Do you have other questions?
Quickly, how many people applied?
A total of over 1,000 people actually applied to the three postings that we had throughout the year. So the last posting was a continuous posting, meaning it was open for the 90 days. So we had a large number of applications in that posting alone.
Thank you. You can continue, please.
I'm sorry?
I said, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. So we do, we do a large number of recruitment during the year. We use social media. Our Public Information Officer, Blair Adams, did a great job with social media, putting out the information on social media, Twitter. We developed posters that had a QR code on it, so that people could use their phone and would take them directly to an application. We did virtual job fairs with the International Association of Black Professional Firefighters. We have job postings that were placed out on a weekly basis with the International Organization of Women in Fire. We have poster-sized advertisements currently placed in the headquarters of Fires, of the Fire Department, and that has the QR code on it, hoping to hit the city residents that come into the building for business. We try to have a bilingual person now at all our job fairs that we attend. We have attended several job fairs throughout the year as well. We've been, of course, trying to make sure we hit any job fairs that the council people invite us to. We've been to District 14, District 8. We've been to two UMBC job fairs. We've been to the Achievement Academy High School. We've been to Career Day, I'm sorry, at Blueford Drew Jemison STEM Academy. We've been to District 8. And today, we're at the Pleasant Grove Baptist Church that was sponsored by the Board Chess Room. So we are certainly making every effort to make sure that we are out continuously doing recruitment on a regular basis, just to ensure that we are informing everybody that we are available. The posting may not be up at the time that we're recruiting, but we also have our interest list to make sure that we tell people to put their name on the interest list, so that they're notified whenever the job posting is made available. So we are recruiting on a regular basis to ensure that we try to make sure everybody has the information. So even if the job posting isn't available at that moment, they're notified when the job posting is placed on the city website and other places.
Okay. Any more?
No, not unless you have some questions.
Okay. We can do that. We'll jump into questions from here. I'll start with two of my own. First, how many vacancies does the Fire Department currently have for EMTs and paramedics? And what was your budgeted strength for both of those positions in fiscal year 2022?
So vacancies, right now, we do have 40 for paramedics and one for EMT. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the rest of your question.
What was your budgeted strength for both of these positions in fiscal year 22?
So we have 89 EMT positions, and I believe for paramedics, it's 100 and, Chief Matts, can you help me out there? Is it 185?
Eighty-three, eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty-three. Hundred and eighty-three for paramedics.
Thank you. And then, what was your target hiring goal for both of these positions during the last fiscal year?
Well, our targeted hiring goal is, of course, to try and fill the vacancies, right? We want to fill the vacancies as much as we can. Paramedic is a difficult position to fill right now. Clearly, we, we're in the process of putting a new class in next week, and we're putting in more EMTs, right? So we're going to fill some of our paramedic positions with EMTs right now, because paramedics is the harder class to get at this point. So we're not getting very many paramedic applications at all. So when you look at the applications that we get, we get more EMT applications than we get paramedics. So that is a problem for us right now in recruiting and hiring. So paramedic is where we have to put more effort in and try and figure out how we can get more paramedics. So we are hiring more EMTs right now, but eventually, we have to look at how we're going to determine and what we can do to fill the paramedic vacancies.
And to that question around your hiring goal, of course, to fill all those vacancies, what, what are some of the metrics and indicators that you guys use to keep track of your progress and success in the various approaches that you guys are taking to fill those roles?
What are the measurements we use for the success in hiring?
Yeah, to ensure that you meet your goals. So we know that we're trying to fill these positions. What are some of the things that we're looking at to make sure that we attract applicants and help usher them through the system to actually?
Well, of course, some of the things we look at is our actual hiring, right? So every time we put a class in, particularly when we have a large number of vacancies in one classification, such as paramedic, every time we, we post for that particular position, are we successful in hiring for that particular position? So when we get ready to hire, right now, while we have 40 vacancies, we're getting ready to put in a class that only has four paramedics in it. So that is not successful. So we have to look at, how can we better figure out what is our path to getting more paramedics? Because that, right now, is clearly our problem position, our problem hiring. So the measurement is number of hires, right?
I would, I'll push you a little on that. I think the number of hires would tell us whether or not we were successful, but we're going to employ different strategies to attract people. And I guess, to that effect, hopefully, we're learning from each process every time, and we're going to take different approaches. Are there any metrics, measures, or otherwise, for those different approaches that tell us whether or not these things are working or not, is my question, really?
Right. So some of the, some of the issues around the hiring of paramedics, of course, are salary, from the, from looking at other counties and workload, right? When they come to work for Baltimore City, it's a much higher-level stress position from the minute they step in the door versus a county or another jurisdiction where they can eventually make much more money and have a much less-stress workload. So those, those are some of the things that when a candidate looks at whether they're going to apply to Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Anarona County, those are the things that the candidate are going to consider, right? So what kind of stress level do I want in my position when I'm applying to a particular job? So when we're recruiting and talking to candidates, it's how do you, how do you level that out for them, right? How do you level that out when you're talking to a candidate about, it's great to come work for Baltimore City, because here are all the benefits and things you can have, but when they start to talk about, what's my balance between work and my personal life, and how am I going to feel when I get off of my four days in a row of working my, my shifts versus my four-day shift at Anarona County or Baltimore County, what does that look like? So those are some of the, quite honestly, those are some of the things that the candidates are looking at. You know, it's, it's a very different work environment at Baltimore City than it is in surrounding jurisdictions, and salary comes into play as well.
Have we given any consideration to opening up the EMT application process to individuals who don't have an EMT certification?
We are starting to look at that, yes.
I also just want to point, I'm sorry, Kim Washington for the Baltimore City Fire Department. I just want to point out also that all of the jurisdictions are having problems hiring paramedics. Right now, it's an issue sort of across the board. I think it's more of a field issue in terms of the number, people who are doing different things, they can travel, those kinds of things. So across all of the jurisdictions in the state, they are all having problems hiring paramedics. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, and I would agree with that, too. You're coming off two years of emergency services dealing with a very difficult environment. And not only are you dealing with emergency services personnel coming off of that, I think a lot of emergency services individuals are coming off and deciding whether or not they want to continue in that type of career. It's a very, you know, two and a half years of dealing with COVID and being frontline workers, and then talking to people about starting a career in that type of work, I think has also been, has lessened the amount of people wanting to become frontline workers in healthcare. I think that's been hurting the applicant pool as well, in every jurisdiction. Most people are wary still about starting a career in an environment that puts them on the front line of a health situation that still has not completely been resolved. So I think that's still a factor. Many people may not think it is, but I think it's still a factor for people applying to these type of positions. They don't necessarily think it's the way to go when they could go find a different job.
Okay. I'm going to, oh, Chief Matts, please, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. For the record, my name's James Matts. I'm the Deputy Chief EMS for the Fire Department. To piggyback on what Ms. Wood was saying, the pandemic had some pretty tragic effects on healthcare as a whole, not just EMS. There's people that are leaving in droves from healthcare as a whole. Hospitals are having problems trying to solicit personnel to work there. Doctors, nurses are leaving the field, as well as paramedics and EMTs. The other problem that we have is, we cut off our feeder pools during the two years of the pandemic. All the, these positions require, all the job training physicians require it, nurses, paramedics, nobody was allowed to ride along. So in turn, we had less people getting through the system. It seems like the system's trying to rebound, because I just sat on a call the other day with Community College Baltimore City, and they were talking about some of their programs and what they're doing. And the other problem that I have to say is, all jurisdictions around the state, around the country, are actively seeking candidates. It's kind of a running joke when you have all the larger jurisdictions. They'll come, and you'll have somebody come here and get trained for maybe two years or four years, and they'll leave after, you know, gaining the experience from here. So it's, it's kind of a cat and mouse game with who can attract what candidates.
I'm going to open up to questions from my colleagues. I'm going to start with Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the team. Appreciate all the hard work that you all do, day in and day out. Wanted me slightly reframe the question that the chairman was asking. Fully understand the challenges in terms of recruitment, know that it's a hard climate to bring in anyone right now, and understand the pay differential, understand all the barriers and reasons why folks would want to work other places. But given all that, we have a real crisis around not enough staff for these positions, and we hear it from our constituents, we hear it from members of the force. You know, we are dealing with the opioid crisis, we're dealing with the post-pandemic trauma that everyone's been through, we're dealing with continued physical issues that so many are people, so many people are having. And so I guess to kind of reframe the question, I actually think it would be really helpful to have some clear goals, understanding the barriers, understanding the challenges, understanding the difficult situation that we find ourselves in. But if we don't have even goals, metrics, and a sense of where we're trying to get to, I don't really understand how we're going to get there, because just saying, here's all the reasons why it's hard, doesn't actually move us forward. So I think, and I think this is where the chair was going as well, is what I would like to see is a plan from the department with some clear goals, metrics, and benchmarks. And if we fall short, we fall short, but we can at least explain it, we can understand it, and we can make forward momentum. I think as a city and as an agency that's attempting to be data-driven, that doesn't just mean knowing numbers, it really means, how do we move from point A to point B to point C, and how do we do it in a way that shows progress toward a goal?
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. And I think you very appropriately got to what I was trying to get to. Thank you. Councilwoman Porter?
And so, Chief Matts, I was actually notified about that community college call, and so I was going to ask about the feeder program that you all are kind of doing within Baltimore City. One of the things that I've been noticing is that, you know, paramedics or EMTs, they're, they're doing college. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of like really work with the junior colleges, work to kind of create some sort of certification program within these institutions, so that we have a clear kind of like pipeline from junior college all the way up, you know, to paramedic and EMT. And I say that because most people, when they're paramedics, they do the three on, three off. They're most more than likely going to school in those three off days. And so if we can capitalize off that, like Councilman Cohen and Chair Costello was saying, like having those benchmarks, but also like creating certification and maybe like major programs at the junior colleges, and also institutions like COPIN, that we can kind of like have some degree-seeking programs, so that it not only, it kind of addresses twofold. It addresses the issue of, you know, having a quality pipeline coming in, but also it allows people to kind of further their education as well. And then, on top of that, we will be able to leverage any type of like public loan forgiveness program at the state level, feeding back to these institutions, because these are... Are you okay?
You just saved?
Oh, sorry. You said, I'm a healthcare worker, sorry. I did. Sorry. That was, I went, I went, I went into, went into mode, sorry. But, so it provides an opportunity for that kind of like pipeline, but also it provides more incentives. Like, that's one of the things in the healthcare field, we have, we have national shortages right now. Totally understand that, but we have to think of ways to incentivize and get people to stay here. So non-traditional approach, having tuition reimbursement, having, you know, live where you work program that not only exceeds the value of where people are now, it also attracts them to the places that they are working. So like, I really want us to not just focus on like bringing people to like working here. We kind of got to do an interdisciplinary approach and like increase and include other agencies as well. People want a safe place to live. People want to have, you know, a neighborhood where they can work. And I mean, for instance, right now, I have a lady in Marl Park who I connected to the Fire Department, and she submitted her application, and she wants to work in Marl Park, you know? And so these are things, like people want to work in their neighborhoods. And so like really thinking it through, not just from a benchmarks perspective, like Councilman Cohen was saying, but like, what would you, what would, what would it take for you to, to live and work in, in an area, and really kind of develop a incentive program around that?
Thank you. I wanted to dig a little on the, the 1,000 folks that applied. So just to better understand, out of the 1,000 folks who applied, roughly how many were dropped from the next consideration because they weren't EMT-satisfied?
So over, over 800 were not qualified at all. They didn't have any EMT or paramedic certification.
So is that a, is that a required?
Yes, that is a minimum qualification.
Or is, is that we deem it as, could we theoretically train folks?
We are not currently set up to do that. So right now, we currently require as a minimum qualification that the applicant have an EMT certification or a paramedic certification to apply.
And you said we were exploring waiving that requirement. What does it take for us to do that?
Chief Shiloh, would you like to?
Well, it would, it would require a different setup at the training academy. We don't, we don't have a setup at the training academy right now to train EMTs or paramedics. So we would need instructors and, and fit it into the schedules and classroom availabilities.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh. I'm the Director of Training with Fire Academy. I do want to note that, right now, every EMT firefighter that's hired that goes through the fire suppression track gets their EMT. They get EMT basic training, they get certified as an EMT. So in order to graduate from fire school as a firefighter, they have their EMT. So we certainly could explore that, hiring people and training them to be EMTs, but that's just a program that would, that would have to be developed. But we could do that.
Yeah. I, I would encourage you to explore that. I think we do have a lot of interest, it seems. A thousand people is a lot of applications. I think that, that's pretty impressive, and we could probably even do better. But if 800 of those people are immediately thrown out because they don't have that certification, and we do have a capacity to train some of them, you know, we may be able to fill so many more of these, these vacancies. So just wanted to kind of press a little on that. I, I encourage you guys to dig a little more and see what we can come back with to resolve that issue. The other question I had, so out of the cumulative number of applicants that applied for EMT, paramedic, do we know how many were city residents?
The total number of city residents?
That would be helpful, yes.
Okay.
Or percentage, both would be actually great.
All the applicants?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll, we'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you. And then, between July 1, 2021, and June 30, 2022, how many EMT or paramedic classes did we host?
How many did we hire?
How many, host, how many classes did we host?
How many job postings did we have? We had four.
We had three.
Excuse me, I'll talk a little louder. So between July 1, 2021, and June 30, 2022, how many EMT or paramedic academy classes did we host?
We had three.
Three.
Three classes. And how many individuals graduated from those classes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How many individuals graduated out of those classes?
So right now, we had a total graduating of 23. There's one still in progress.
All right. And then, what was, of those 23, those that have now gone onto the street, how many have we retained? What's our retention rate of those 23?
Right now, I believe we retained them all.
We retained them all. Excellent. And then, i, is it the case that the Fire Department will be putting on two additional full-time medic, medic units in service this fiscal year?
Yes.
And if so, is the time, what is the timeline for when they're going to be in service? And where will they be located?
Chief Matts?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I missed the second part.
Sure, what is, what is the timeline?
So it's 16 additional EMTs, it's two BLS units, and I didn't catch the backend.
And what is the timeline for when they're going to be in service?
Timeline would be when the next class would be coming in, probably by the end of the year. Is that where, the timeline for the next class?
So we have a class of EMTs starting July 20. So is that when you, yeah. So when they graduate?
Yeah, by December would be when that class would come out. And then, you had a second part of your question, I couldn't hear.
And then, where will they be located?
Tentatively, we're looking at putting them in the Seann Town, Winchester area, and another one up in the northwest, Cardo or Baltimore.
And then, what is going to be our new budgeted EMT and paramedic strength with these new units?
It'll be our existing numbers plus 16 EMTs, so it'll be 89 plus 16.
Okay.
105 for the EMT.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you. There we go. Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Forgive me if you've answered this before in other hearings, but I was curious about, you talked about salary being one of the challenges for recruitment. Have we done, is that true? Are, are the salaries around the state kind of the same, or are ours the lowest ones around the state?
Around the state, I can't answer that if ours is the lowest or not. I know- I know relatively speaking in closer to the counties, ours comes in lower from...
Than the surrounding counties is what you're saying?
Yes.
Uh huh. But it sounds like folks come here for experience, they get a lot of it.
Right, and then they...
And then they go off. What are the incentives you're thinking about to try to keep people here? Obviously thinking about raising the salary, but is there, I would imagine, you know, there are kinds of incentives to keep them here that I think would be something that we should look into.
Sure. We can certainly look into trying to come up with some different incentives for that from...
Yeah, maybe something on the benefit side, although we have awesome health insurance already.
Generally, we have a lot of great benefits already as city employees. So the incentives and, you know, and they get incentive pay for their certifications already and things of that nature. So I think the incentives would really, would have to be more along the lines of, to be frank, how do you lessen the job stress?
Sure.
And the amount of work that they do, right? So that's really where, you know, trying to come up with an incentive plan of how we would try and lessen that. And so how do we do that, right? So that's really, you know, because when they come in and look at the workload that they have and the type of work they're doing, the stress that comes from that, the amount of hours that they put in, and then because there, as between union benefits from their MOU and the benefits that they get from the city, they're not lacking in benefits, that's for sure.
Right.
So let's be honest about that. They're not lacking in benefits from there. But on the EMS side, when they're working, they have a very stressful and a very, very taxing job. It's very, very busy. So the incentive would be, how do you make that more feasible for them? More easier, not easier, but more realistic, right? So when they go home, they're not completely stressed out. When they go home after four days at work, they're not, you know, completely shook by what they just spent four days doing. I think that's more of, and Chief Matts, if you think I'm off the mark here, please speak up.
Yeah, the chief has talked, yeah, the chief has talked about how we're trying to address the 911 calls so that folks aren't going to calls that they probably don't need to be in.
Right, so then, you know, we can...
You know, trying to get to the sort of soft handoff at the hospitals and that takes forever, you know, that kind of thing.
So it's more, you know, looking at things like that along with the, I mean, salary, of course, is an issue, but they do have a, they do have a great benefit.
Oh, sure. As city employees, we have great benefits, yeah.
So it's more looking at the overall workload they're running constantly and how do we, you know, how do we manage that better?
Yeah, it's a tough one because obviously if we had more paramedics and could fill it, then the workload would be lower, right? So...
Right, so even when we fill, let's say we fill the vacancies, you know, we may, we may well be, when we fill all those vacancies, we may well be in the same situation still because of the high levels. So is it more positions than what we already have once they're filled?
Sure.
Trying to get to where we need to be.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a, it's a never a dull moment around here. So there's always something happening and I can understand that, but obviously very much needed service, you know? We can't, it's not something we can cut. So it's extremely important. So I don't know, I was just trying to brainstorm on how we could try to resolve this issue because it's actually an issue we're having all over city government, right? So to try to retain people is really critical. So thanks for engaging in the conversation, I appreciate it. I had one last question. You had mentioned earlier that, and we all know, that our paramedics and EMT see everything, right? I mean, they experience, I'm not a nurse or a doctor for a reason, right? And so there's a lot of trauma there that they're seeing, that they're experiencing. And so I want to make sure that they're also having, there is that support for them because it is, it is a highly stressful, as you said, but also there's a lot of trauma that they're experiencing here too. So I don't remember, and you'll have to forgive me if you've already talked about, you know, what are those supports for firefighters as well, or paramedic EMT as well?
Sure. We have our BHS program, right? That's available to both firefighters and, you know, our suppression and EMS side. It's available 24/7. It's confidential. They can reach out to them anytime. We encourage all of our management and supervision to make sure, and our employees from a perspective of a, you know, however you want to put it, buddy, coworker type thing, to if you see someone that needs support or they look to be stressed or whatever, to reach out and make sure that they give them the BHS information, to call them, right? We have our SISAM team, which is our critical incident stress management team that goes out on incidents, but the members also know that they can call them if they need additional support or if they're in a situation that may be difficult to handle, you know, so that they can reach out to, again, an employee, a peer, that they may feel more comfortable calling a peer and saying, "I have an issue or a problem that I'm dealing with and I'm not sure, you know, I don't want, I don't necessarily want to call a counselor, you know, so I'll call a peer and find out if I can get some support." So we try to make sure that we have those, you know, we also, you know, city's EAP system, you know, so we try to make sure that we reach out and provide that information to our members on a regular basis so that they're aware of it and that we encourage them to use it. And we try to create an environment right now, we're trying to create an environment in the department that doesn't make it, that it's not healthy to do so. We're trying to make sure we are training right now with our members to say that it's okay to ask for help, that it's not a bad thing to ask for help. We want all of our members to feel that it's okay to ask your coworker, it's okay to reach out to BHS, it's okay to do all those things. So...
Peer support.
Hi, Chief Saville, Assistant Chief Safety and Member Services. Also, just recently, we started up a peer support group. So we have a critical incident stress management teams that deals with critical incidents immediately. Then we have a peer support group, which are members of the department that have been trained in peer support. And what they do is, after that incident, there may be people that may still need some assistance dealing with whatever it is that they just have. So now they have a peer support group of people that they work with and that they know that they can reach out to, talk to them, and then they assist them with whatever issues they're having. That's something we just put together in about the last year or so. And the captain that's running that is top-notch.
That's great to know. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to note, I think these are all really helpful conversations. In my mind, and just me thinking, that's an issue that I think is really important towards retention, making sure that we can help people deal with the traumas that they see every day on the job. What I would ask, and I'm really curious about the particular strategies that we're using for recruiting. We should still be doing these things towards retention. It's really important for us. I know we're going to see this be incredibly important into the future, but I'm really curious what those strategies are that we're taking on the marketing side or otherwise to attract people to the department and to help usher them through the recruitment process so that we can see more folks start on their day one. And then that's when some of this retention stuff really kicks in and can be really helpful in keeping them on the job. So I guess that's one of my asks for our next time when we get back here, if we could have a sense for what those strategies are? You noted a couple of the problems, some having to do with salaries, some having to do with ease and flexibility within the job. But identifying those problems, lining out some of our strategies to attract people despite those problems, and then better understanding what measures we're taking to implement those strategies, and if we're tracking any of that stuff, I think it'd be really helpful for us next time. And my last question is, for fiscal year 2023, how many academy classes do we anticipate holding?
For EMS?
For, yes.
So we will anticipate probably, I would say probably two to three at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing no further questions, we are going to put this hearing in a recess. I want to thank you for all the feedback. And we're going to move on to our next bill. Our next hearing is going to be on Bill LO-21-0015, Baltimore City Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services Stat and Operations, for the purpose of requesting that the fire chief present information to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill was introduced on October 4th, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself. And from there, I'll turn it over to the department. Chief Matts?
Hi, good afternoon again. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Deputy Chief of EMS for the Fire Department. Thanks for that, giving us access to that. Once we get it brought up, I can start walking through it. I'm going to need it over here. So we came a long way since our first, what is this, probably our fourth?
Oh, I'm losing track.
Maybe our third?
We see a lot of you.
Yeah, it seems like a lot, isn't it? Well, I'm here to report, I'm happy to report that our data scientist, Jake Myter, we did a lot of work on a lot of the questions you asked surrounding. Initially, it was around what's our busiest box assignments. That was a hot mess we did the last time. What we did is, with Jake and the whole team's work, we were actually able to produce an interactive dashboard where we can query the dashboard for different things. In this particular case, this particular dashboard that we're looking at right now was the number of traffic accidents in 2022 by neighborhood. And then would actually, what it'll do is actually go all the way far down and tell you the actual individual neighborhoods. And then on the left side, we actually put the top 10 neighborhoods. Something that keeps coming up, and we had to go back to the team and really look close, Frankfurt, the neighborhood of Frankfurt kept coming up and coming up and coming up and we couldn't figure it out. When you look at the census tract data for Frankfurt, it's over 30,000 homes, so there's a lot higher incidence of calls in those neighborhoods. So that explained that. We tried to work it out by, you know, percentage of the population, it just didn't work out. So the numbers are what the numbers are and we did them like that. So as you can see, by traffic accidents, the top accidents, downtown obviously is going to be number one. Why? Because we have so much traffic going through there day-to-day for businesses, Broadway East, Inner Harbor, Pulaski Industrial Area, and then Frankfurt, you're going to see quite a bit, Bel Air Edison, Oliver Upton, Sandtown Winchester, and then of course, the balance. The next thing we targeted was cardiac arrest in quarter two by neighborhood, and the highest occurrence of cardiac arrest actually occurs in Frankfurt with 26 cases, followed by Upton, downtown at 23, Sandtown Winchester, Brooklyn, Morrell Park. One of the questions, we're going to have a lot of these, why are we doing this like this? For instance, the, I'll go back one slide, why are we trying to target neighborhoods by traffic accidents? Why are we trying to target by cardiac arrest? It's going to really direct our outreach efforts. So if we know we have a higher incidence of cardiac arrest in the Frankfurt area or downtown, Sandtown Winchester, that's where we get our outreach teams to get out there and teach things like hands-only CPR to try to, you know, turn the curve on our cardiac arrest survival. And I know Dr. Lawner's going to love to talk about his cardiac arrest data a little bit later. But basically, these kind of dashboards direct our outreach efforts and where we're going in the future. The next thing was sick cases. Sick cases are really going to account for a highest number of low acuity or low priority cases. Bel Air Edison actually comes in at the highest in the second quarter at 155, followed by Frankfurt and downtown at 139. Brooklyn has 120. Sandtown Winchester and Upton combined to about 205 cases. These are those cases I was talking to you about and the several cases we have. Our low acuity and sick cases actually account for about a third of our calls per day, per year. We're talking roughly 46,000 calls. That's what we're trying to target some of our outreach and some of our population health Trauma. Trauma is primarily, and Jake, this is penetrating trauma, correct? Yeah. The trauma we did here, we specified for penetrating trauma. In this case, the highest incidence of trauma on the second quarter was Frankfurt, neighborhood of Frankfurt, and they've had uptake and problems over around the Sinclair area, if I'm not correct, in that area, followed by Carrollton Ridge, downtown, Upton, Broadway East, and Brooklyn. What does this tell us? This is the areas we're having the most problems right now with these types of responses. The opioid crisis. Councilman Cohen, I know that's one of your near and dear areas. What we do is, we actually looked at where we have in most of our opioid responses over the second quarter. Sandtown Winchester comes in at number one, that west Baltimore, southwest Baltimore corridor. What are we doing with this information? We're targeting our leave-behind Narcan programs, our, you know, when our paramedics go in and they hopefully wake somebody up from an overdose, if we know there's family around, we'll try to leave a leave-behind kits with those. That's publicly available. We place that on open Baltimore a monthly basis. We actually tell, it's by zip code, but we do by number of leave-behind kits as well as number of cases where we use Narcan or naloxone. We don't do the actual volume, we just do an individual case counts as one. The next thing is our low acuity cases for the second quarter of 2022. In this case, that would be downtown would come in at the highest with 362, followed by Frankfurt at 358. Bel Air Edison would come in at 279, Brooklyn at 219, and then Upton will be their top five. Once again, these are those lower acuity calls. This is low acuity as a whole. The other slide was sick cases, which to be honest, would be our 26th card by itself. And then the last slide that was in this kind of a setup, in this dashboard setup, is all EMS incidents for the second quarter. The highest number of EMS incidents, of course, occurs downtown corridor, which is due to the amount of traffic and businesses we have in downtown Baltimore. The second of all EMS incidents is Frankfurt, because once again, there's so many homes in that particular neighborhood. Bel Air Edison is third at 722. Upton and Sandtown Winchester round out the top five. And then we put the top 10, just so you can go ahead and look through those. And the last of the top 10 is Coldstream, Homestead, Monobello at 345. You probably want me to pause at that point for...
Yeah, let's pause there and open up for questions. So I'll touch on Frankford. So Frankford ranks number one, two, and four in six statistical categories identified in this presentation. What are some of the demographics of the Frankford community?
In the Frankford community? It's just a large-scale number of homes in that particular area, according to the census tract. It is in excess of 30,000 homes. What do you mean demographics in terms of age? I'll have to research a little bit closer for you with that.
Yeah, basic demographics to tell us what's more going on there. I mean, it is a very large neighborhood with a ton of homes, but for it to show up repeatedly on everything as being within the top five is, I think, telling for us. And maybe we can find some way to either leverage the fact that it is a community and leverage, you know, the relationship with the community association or otherwise, but really curious what things we know about Frankford. I think that seems like a...
Sure.
...point we should be focused on, yeah.
When he says 30,000 homes, he means over a big, it's one of the biggest neighborhoods in the city. So a neighborhood that would normally be maybe four or five different neighborhoods, Frankfurt is basically like a huge swath of northeast. So that is part of it. So like where you have Sandtown and Upton combined, Frankfurt is bigger than both of those neighborhoods combined.
I see.
So it's, so that makes, just to add some context for Frankfurt itself.
I wonder what these numbers look like if you broke them down per capita?
That's what I was going to ask.
And if Frankford would still show up consistently with...
We tried that, we tried several different ways because God knows, Councilman Costello, we didn't want the box assignment cross-up that we had the last time in here. We tried per capita. The problem with per capita is we also have very small neighborhoods and really unique neighborhoods will show up that might only have like a population of 900 people or something. If there's one incident or something in there, it flags those neighborhoods. The other side of that, flip side of that, we also had to be very careful when we looked at like low acuity cases. If we didn't exclude skilled nursing facilities, like major ones like Leventale, you're only going to see Leventale show up at all times. So we tried to do it just the way it was. Instead, it tried to exclude a little bit. When we did the traffic accidents, we excluded 95 because all you're going to see is a 95 corridor, 83. We tried to get down as far as we could. There was no way around Frankfurt, unfortunately. And I did, we did a lot of iterations of this dashboard, and we have more dashboards for you. It's going to help your data-driven decision-making mind, but that, unfortunately, we tried, I can't tell you how many of these we went through, to try multiple. This was probably the best...
Okay.
...way for us to kind of gauge with it.
Do we, I guess, I probably know the answer to this question, I'll ask it anyway. Do we have an issue in Frankford that we need to address or is it just the size of the neighborhood that is largely driving?
At this time, it looks like it's the size, but we're going to do a lot more research into the demographics that you're asking and see if there's just something that points out. It is a large swath. I grew up in that area when I was, it's a huge neighborhood up in there.
Okay. Any other questions from folks? Councilman... Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you to the team for the work that you do on this really important, pressing crisis that we all face. One thing to just put out to you all, in the last three months as part of the Healing City Act, we've started doing, having peer navigators in our libraries, starting in Penn North, and we're also now down in Brooklyn. And so these are folks who have been in active addiction themselves, who are now able to support other folks. They've sort of seen a lot of growth and improvement. They get fully certified, and they do outreach, they provide Narcan, just like you guys do. They are fully trained in how to bring someone back when they're overdosing. And they also connect people with treatment and other resources, whether it's folks need housing, folks need social services. You know, as you know, often, these issues are comorbid and exist together. Would love to make that connection, because sort of the hope and the goal is to build a interconnected network where we're not just doing things in isolation, like EMS over here, libraries over here, nonprofits over here, but to really have an ecosystem where we are operating through harm reduction, where we are doing everything we can to prevent people from dying, which we know remains a horrific crisis in our city. So again, appreciate the focus on opioids and trauma. And after the hearing, I want to just make a connection to that program, because you all should be talking to each other.
Certainly, Councilman.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions?
I've got one more. So I was looking at the low acuity numbers, and the Frankford and the Bel Air Edison communities account for 637 low acuity calls for service during the second quarter of the year. What percentage of the time do medic units spend out of service due to these calls in these two communities? Do we know that?
The individual communities, I'd have to research. We can have the number for you, it's no problem. As a rule of thumb, a third of our calls are that. So you can basically figure a third of each hour, a third of each day is dedicated to those low acuity. And I'd have to break out the percentages per day for that particular neighborhood, but that's easy. We could definitely deliver that to you.
And then I know one of the things we were looking into was a pilot on alternative transportation options. Can you tell us a little bit about what's going on there and if there's any progress on that?
Sure. We're actively working on, it's a huge task that we're working on right now. One is, we took a page out of the book of Washington DC with the nurse in the 911 center, and they don't physically sit in the 911 center. They're actually given low acuity calls that are phoned straight to them, and they basically try to work with the patients and take them to either alternative destinations like urgent care centers, physicians' offices, and for transport, they historically use like Uber and Lyft. Some of the other things that we're looking at from a population health perspective, we're trying to address some of these wraparound services like Councilman Cohen was talking about, by putting population health crews on the street to be able to go out to these low acuity calls. The other thing we're exploring as part of our ET3 initiative through the Medicare and Medicaid process is this telemedicine. There's places in the country where when a paramedic goes there, if it's a low acuity call, you could actually call back and talk to somebody like Dr. Lawner. Hey, so you know, Councilman, you look sick, but you're not that sick. How about I call in a prescription for you to CVS? They can actually resolve a call on the spot. We're not at that level yet, but I'm really actively trying to get us to that part, because it's not going to be just one thing. It's not going to take, a whole bunch of units are going to take the problem. I think it's going to be a multifaceted, we'll have to work with the nurse in the 911, some telemedicine issues, some alternative destination, and we're trying to chip away at the problem to take that 46,000 calls down, reduce the workload on our people, hopefully retain people a lot easier. That's the big plan. We're just trying to get there right now. RFP process for the nurse in the 911, things like that.
Got it. Thank you. No further questions?
I'm sorry, Dr. Lawner moved the thing in front of all my data. I can't see the numbers, that's why I'm trying to look at. It's, I have to blame it on you, Ben. That's okay. We go through this each time when we do average calls for service by day, by week, by month, and then we're trying to look at those by comparison to see where we are. So for this quarter, our daily incidents, and I would like to point out, we're getting into the summertime. The next quarter, you're going to see the numbers go up a little bit more. It's normal for us to do that in the summertime. Daily, we average about 421 incidents. That's strictly EMS. If you add in the suppression responses, that number's really more like 500 or 525. So this is strictly EMS. Weekly, we average about 2700 incidents per week, whereas last quarter it was at 24, 2500, so we're creeping up. Monthly, we average this quarter 12,780. Last quarter, we were at about 12,000. Time of the day, we're still busy, and I'll show you in heat map in a little while about how busy we are. In this particular quarter, our busiest times were between 12 o'clock in the afternoon and 6 o'clock at night. Day of the week was Friday. Time of the month that we're busiest was at the end of the month, and the month or quarter that was busiest was June. The next data, you're going to see July and August are going to be busy as well. So we tried to compare our average calls for service by day, and we looked at it over the last two fiscal years in the same quarter. So we're slightly down from last year's quarter. Last quarter, they were at 400, I'm sorry, last year, quarter two, was it 462 incidents? We're at 421 right now. Remember 20s data? When you look at 20s, it's all COVID, so the numbers are down. Remember, across the country and across the region and in the city, people were afraid to go to the hospital, so the numbers are drastically lowered. And that trend is just staying put. We're just a little bit behind where we were last year at this time. This is the heat map that basically demonstrates where we get the busiest calls for service by hour of the day and then day of the week. Quite honestly, when we first did the, when we did the two-tier system back in 2015 or 16, our peak times were from nine in the morning till nine at night. That peak time now, honestly, is about 6, 7 o'clock in the morning till about midnight. That's really where we have to be able to focus our efforts on those times. Dr. Lawner would love to do it 24 hours a day. I'm more of a realist. I'm trying to stay, we have services available through those two times of the day. The next thing we do is the most frequent, advanced life support calls, and then I'll follow that with basic life support calls. Once again, our most, highest incidence of ALS call is going to be, difficulty breathing is going to be number one. Overdose unfortunately is going to be in there. We're going to have chest pain in there as well, and then another breathing problem that accounts for our top five. The lowest acuity call are going to, once again, you're going to see a lot of these 26 calls. 26 is that sick call. That's the most common, and those calls are things like sick unwell, sick in general, unknown. We get a lot of unknowns that end up being sick cases, so there could be overdoses too, and then sick not alert. Surprisingly, in a top five vehicle accident, they climb into these top five of our lowest acuity. So our total time or average response time for an EMS call, the average time combined is about 10 minutes and 1 second. Our goal was to be in that nine-minute window. That's the goal that we'll have in our metrics. Medic average is 10 minutes exactly, and ambos are a little slower, 10 minutes and 5 seconds. I don't have the slide in front of me, but this quarter, we did much better than we did last quarter. Last quarter, our average is about 30 to 40 seconds higher in all three categories. So we're trending better in this quarter. So what we did, I know a lot of people were talking about response time, response time. What this graphic actually demonstrates in quarter two, the blue graphic are low acuity calls. That's the calls that, quite honestly, people can sit and wait. There's places in Grady, is, Grady's in Atlanta, right? Down in like Atlanta, when you call with a low acuity call to 911, they could tell you, it's going to be 45 minutes before you get a medic down there or a unit down there. That's the calls that need to wait a little longer. The call with the red line, that's the higher acuity call. That's where we want to be as fast as possible. And in this case, I can't read it. So we're at 8 minutes and 33 seconds on the higher acuity call. So the next slide is a representation of suppression response time, and then the duration, they have to wait until medics arrive on scene. Suppression response EMS calls averages this quarter at 6 minutes and 15, 16 seconds. They've actually done the same, they improved by about 30 seconds this quarter. EMS wait time, this quarter is 11 minutes 10 seconds. It's about two minutes faster than they were last quarter. So that's good. That might have something to do with the fact we're using commercial surge units to augment some of our needs at that time. And then we always look at the dreaded UHU. That's kind of some of the things that Councilman Ramos was talking about with regard to workload on our people. UHU, a really good system, runs about .25 or .3, or that's roughly 25% to 30% of every hour you should be working. The other remainder, you should be getting ready, training, eating, doing some good healthy stuff, or just taking a break. Unfortunately, in the city, we average roughly right about .6, or about 2/3 of every hour we're running. These are the numbers. The overall number for the city right now is at 59%. Medics are running, the ALS people are running about .62, and the BLS units are down about Do you want to stop there, because I'm going to go into the metrics next?
Yeah, open up to questions. I see Councilman Porter has a question.
Thank you. I did have a question about response times, particularly for South Baltimore. Specifically, it shows a consistent downward trend in Q4 related to response times specifically in South Baltimore. And so I asked, what's the process management strategy necessary to improve wait times, particularly for those neighborhoods in South Baltimore?
So we analyze where we have most of our calls, and we try to pre-place our units in those areas. Unfortunately, what happens during the peak hours, we could try to pre-place people all over the city. What happens is people are actually drawn into an ellipse around Baltimore City, which accounts for our highest percentages of calls, and that's where people are pulled in. We're trying to pre-place units to help reduce that or eliminate that. Some of the things that may help that, like I said, was preplacement of some commercial surge units to offset us. That might have helped, because I know they're putting somebody down south.
So they are putting some commercial...
They're putting someone around to try to offset. Same, in the same note, we recognize we're having a little problem in Northwest.
Yes.
That's what we identified. Okay, we need to start putting somebody over there.
And do we have a timeline on when that can be executed?
As soon as we could. I'd really like to have it by the end of the year would be a goal.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to really actively do that. We're also getting ready to bring online a medic-only firehouse soon, which will move some of our people around, which will help with some of that as well.
Okay. And Chief Matts, I know we have talked about some of the wait times within the hospitals. Is that going to kind of subside some of the wait times that we're seeing from a hospital perspective?
So we had, I can't get out of City Hall, last week we had, right across in the current room.
Yeah.
We're actively doing the Harvard, Bloomberg Harvard study where we're working with Harvard. Last week, we had major hospital administrators in here. We're trying to actively work on some of the strategies to help improve that. The next step, the mayor and the city administrator are going to sit down with the CEOs and try to go after some of that low hanging fruit. One of the things that they identified that other states are doing, currently, we park patients in the emergency room that are waiting to go upstairs. One of the strategies that they use, it's almost no cost, is if you're going to the fourth floor for like med surge, they're taking those people to the med surge floor and parking them there and putting pressure on the people that are going to receive them instead of leaving them downstairs.
Instead of leaving them downstairs.
Exactly. And what it's actually doing, Ben, I can't remember the percentage, do you remember? It's got a significant percentage improvement in offload. It's, I want to say it's like 20% or more.
Because one of the things, one of the things that not only I've been hearing just in like my work, but also even from like our EMT professionals, is that the wait times are prohibiting them from actually going back out. And so trying to find ways how to offload, and I'm so excited that you all are thinking about that, talking with the hospital administrators, because then that preamps them to kind of figure out their operations on their end, taking the EMT professionals out of it so that they can kind of go back out in the field.
Sure. I mean, I'll tell you, last week, the wait time on the region was about 54 minutes average. We average about 50, 51. We're slightly better than the regional average, but the challenging hospitals are always our outliers.
Yeah, I'm just specifically thinking about my...
Exactly. That are shared with like Anarono County, in your case, possibly Howard.
Yes.
You know, when you, when you talk about like Sonora, you're talking about Baltimore County and some of the other ones coming in. And there's not a lot of cross where I can see all the different jurisdictions, and that's what happens when you get flooded and locked in.
Yeah. Because jurisdictions are bringing their patients here, so is that data being captured?
It's definitely captured, and the state of Maryland through MEMS are trying to work on, they have something right now called the AHA database.
Okay. I've never heard of that. You said it's AHA?
But it tells basically how many units are at a hospital and the average offload time based on their reports. They have to accurately hit the data to give the data, but it's working so far. MEMS is planning on doing a joint thing that, the existing chats that we use, that yellow-red system is broken and outdated. It's slated to be, when it stops working, it's going to stop being used. They're trying to find what the next iteration of that is, and that's what they're trying to get to.
Okay. And you say it's the AHA database? It's HAA?
Ben Lawner, the medical director of Baltimore City Fire Department. I just want to preface this, because this is a conversation that could go on for hours. And I do not want to set expectations, like because we're working on it, it's going to go away. I can tell you, I am very disappointed, frustrated, and this keeps me up, I think, every day. I still work as an emergency department clinician. We diverted, I want to say, last time, three strokes. We had three hours of standby time, and this is when I, as a medical director for the city fire department, am working. And I want to be very clear that this is not a Baltimore City problem. This is a national problem, which is also made more difficult by our global budget, which does not incentivize hospitals here to make more beds. So what happens is you have a patient population with low healthcare literacy, and I might add, a lot of healthcare needs, right? Just because it's low acuity, you can't, I had this the other day, you can't have somebody with substance use, behavioral health determinants, and somebody with no healthcare and say, we're just not going to meet you to the hospital, go home. And by the way, there is no homeless shelter that's going to take somebody with chronic wounds and mental and behavioral health disturbances and house them for several days. So what you have is, as Chief Matt accurately described, a significant bottleneck that is not going to go away. Now, what the council and what my patients, and quite frankly, what I don't want to hear is, well, we're never going to be able to get ahead of this. But what is good news, and I just want to emphasize, in addition to the AHA dashboard, in addition to situational awareness, that particular meeting, and I believe it was six hours here at the City Hall just across the way, we had the Maryland Department of Health, the Office of Healthcare Quality, OHCQ, we had administrators. So this is on the radar. There are very specific initiatives that we will be talking about. I really, I think the end result is moving the needle and decreasing wait times. I think I temper that by saying, we've got a long way to go in the city. I am just very glad that through this administration's support, we were able to have that conversation in a very transparent way, and you are absolutely correct that nothing is done in isolation. I think you mentioned that earlier. We have to have partnership between the public, the citizens, the healthcare administration to make this happening. There are a couple of discrete initiatives, not the least of which are behavioral health sort of diversion which is ongoing, but we do hope to track those, and I think a surrogate marker of this effectiveness is going to be a decreased at-hospital time. Right now, though, that metric takes a little while to budge, and I am optimistic that we will be moving that in the correct direction.
No, I thank you for that. One of the things that I've been really focusing on is kind of getting it connected to like their accreditation, you know, because these are clear violations that they have, like they're placing pressure on the system, and so I wonder if that, I wonder if that was talked about during the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And how nationally, like national accreditation bodies can really kind of force some of these hospital administrators to like actually do something and amend their operations.
So one, and unfortunately, I don't like to throw this card out, but the OHCQ investigates hospitals for possible intala violations, and I, the thing that is really upsetting is that the downstream effect of this, if you cite a hospital for intala, they are going[1682.62] to lose Medicare funds. And if the downstream effect of this is we shut down, let's say, St. Agnes Hospital, which sees 80,000 patients a year, and they can no longer receive Medicare patients, the whole system is going to collapse. And I don't use those terms lightly. I can say, however, we have begun reporting very transparently not only excessive wait times, and also potential incidents of patient harm. So, the answer to your question is yes. We have partnered with OHCQ in a very, I think, transparent and objective way. I don't have public access, or I don't have access to their outcomes, but we are working, and they were in attendance there, MDH as a matter of fact, and MHA, all of the acronyms to actually place pressure, because this is just as much of a crisis as retention and recruitment. It all relates to the delivery of timely healthcare. So, yes, we are, we are working on that.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And my last question was, was there a meeting, a meeting summary produced, and is the council able to view those meeting summaries?
So, absolutely. We did have an after-action report. I can't remember where that is compiled, but I will certainly get that for you because that just concluded last week.
Okay.
We'd be happy to share that with the council.
Okay. And more specifically, Mr. Chair, I'm thinking the Health and Environment and Technology Committee with Chair McCray. I know that she would be very interested in learning more about this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We can continue?
Sure. So, we've come a long way since our last discussion about operational metrics and the Office of Performance and Innovation, i.e. City Stat. What I did is I changed my slides just this morning. What I want to show you is, we have a dashboard that's actively being used now, and then show you where we're going, because we actually have mockups of where we're heading with real-time databases that we can manipulate, that are publicly available, that are great. So, I'm going to show you, the first one I wanted to show you today was the behavioral metrics that we discussed last week. Dr. Lawner is very involved with our behavioral diversion program. They meet weekly, they discuss what types of calls are diverted. With the behavioral diversion database, they actually look for calls where there is no police, and there's no police or no 911 response. The problem with that is it's a slow learning process. This is the actual live database as we see it right now. Matter of fact, they just had a press conference within the last week or two. It's one year that they were up and running with this, and they've been able to do a lot of work. The problem is it takes a lot of slow work to make sure we're getting the right kind of calls, we're getting the right response to the right person. But this is a fully operational dashboard. We're trying to make about another six more of these coming down the line. So, I wanted to kind of show you, this is one that's working right now, it's out there. And then the next ones I wanted to show you is where we're going to be heading. This is the future community-based metrics. Remember last time I went through all the different metrics that I wanted to talk about? Everything from the most common types of calls, the neighborhoods with the highest incidence, hours that we're in critical condition, and the critical condition, it's, in DC, they map, critical condition is how many units?
I think when they have like seven or...
They have seven or less units, they go to critical condition. We're in that on a regular basis right now. So, that's something, and to be quite honest, that is what the data is. The trick is to get the data, learn from the data, as we talked about earlier, and try to be able to improve it. And then the last item we look at is number of responses related to overdoses and such. This is actually a partnership. We're working with the Office of Performance and Innovation. They're getting ready to do an iteration of EMS stat with City Stat. The thing that's real nice with this dashboard that you have in front of you, and understand, this is just a mockup, it doesn't have the active data they're going to be doing in there, is that you can change the different metrics of what you're looking for. You can actually check a couple of boxes, and it'll be able to adapt to what you're doing. What's nice about this as well, it's going to be powered by, it's called Power BI, and I'm not a real techie person, but it turns out, through research, we use First Watch, we found out there was money sitting in an account we weren't using. We were able to leverage that money to use Power BI to power these dashboards. So, this kind of checks all the boxes we were looking for at the last, the last council hearing we talked about. Operational metrics, that's going to be the metrics where we're looking at response times, EMS response times, top EMS responses, top EMS transports, hospital offload delays, the exact things that we're talking about, but we're going to be able to real-time look at these. Understand, when we do the hearing, I got to take snapshots. I can't do, you know, I got to put a timeframe and put it in, but these, oh, I'm sorry. These will be publicly available as we can move forward too. Again, we have the ability to manipulate the data. If you can see, I can't really point on here, but to the left side of the dashboard, you can actually change the metrics in the data field you're looking for, so I think it's going to be a great thing for us.
Awesome.
The second operational metrics is going to be average response time, unit hour utilization, all the different things that we're trying to report to you, but it's going to be fluid. My goal was when we do this hearing, we should be able to just take snapshots, make our slides, and come in here, and we talk about where we're going. That's where we're trying to get to, because that is what the data is, and that's where we're working from. Again, all of these different features are going to include like directed triage, alternative destination transports. The other thing to remember, as we evolve with population health, some of these metrics are going to evolve. If there's more, you know, alternative destinations, or we're using the nurse triage, you're going to see some of those metrics present in here as we work forward. Clinical metrics are going to be something Dr. Lawner is going to love to talk about. All the things that Dr. Lawner is going to discuss in a few minutes, we showed the actual clinical metrics for you to look at today. But the things you're looking at in there is cardiac arrest survival, are we giving aspirin every chest pain, are we doing 12 lead EKGs, are we using capnography? Those graphics will be right in front of you. I have them in a couple of subsequent slides that Dr. Lawner will share with you as well. And then the last clinical metrics are, like I said, are we using CO2 monitoring of patients, which is an indication of, you know, do we get a good airway on them? Are we doing blood glucose on particular patients? Do we do 12 lead EKGs right after a patient that has an apparent heart attack, or they call it a STEMI in here?
If you guys want to...
Any questions on those slides?
No. Actually, I have one question. With regard to, I'll go back a little bit to the opioids issue that you brought up. This is much earlier in the slide than I meant to ask then, but do, do you guys share this information with the health department and the police department to improve their operations or help with their strategies?
There's the, I'm sorry. There's the opioid task force, that's, there's representation from PD as well as the fire department. We work closely with them on our response. That was one of the things that they asked that we put the, on the, what's it, Open Baltimore website. We actually, on a regular basis, tell the number of times that we do leave behind kits as well as actually administer naloxone by zip code. Some of the other things that we're working on in the future with the health department, part of the population health initiative, we're trying to not just be dovetailed into one or two things that we're working with, we're trying to do a vast array of different response profiles. One of those could be a community paramedic along with an outreach, peer-to-peer support like Councilman Cohen talked about earlier. Health is talking seriously about bringing somebody online. If we identify something like that, we could definitely pair them up. The idea is, I want people out doing something every day. If you're not working on super-users or high utilizers today, guess what? We can work with some opioid problems, it's a flux, because the opioid responses goes up and down. So, this might be a high day for opioid response. If you find somebody that wants help, that's the key, they got to want help. If you want help, you respond to them. We could potentially reach back, pick up somebody, and head out there to do that. We're looking at a lot of different models for doing that.
And with that opioid task force, I'm sure we've, we're at least identifying and testing different approaches to hopefully help people dealing with opioid overdoses. Do we have any metrics on new strategies and otherwise that can help us show what is and is not working? Is that something that we look at in that task force?
There's a statewide task force, and it's OCC, or I don't know the exact acronym for it. There's an operational opioid task force at a state level, and then each local community has it. We work with best practices, and one of some things, one of the things that they're suggesting right now is along with leave behind Narcan, the potential of doing fentanyl test strips. That way, we can reduce the, you know, incidents of death with the, you know, with opioids when you get the fentanyl mixed in. That's where a user could make it if it flags, you know, you've got fentanyl in here, and that's a problem. That's one of the newer things. They're trying to see what works and what doesn't work, but it's a task force, it's as a group, and we work through that together.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Please, Dr. Lawner.
Sure. Thanks again for the opportunity. I think I'm mindful, you know, a lot of these are kind of clinical specific, but as we talked about recruitment and retention, again, all of these fit together. So, when you talk about a system like this, which is always overburdened and overtasked, the more we can refine this, that we deliver the right care for the patient and, I think, collaborate, the better it is for everyone. So, I like the idea that these don't exist in isolation, but it's important to be able to, you know, track all of these as we move forward, because they relate to things such as operational deployment and healthcare literacy and access. So, these are metrics that are derived from a national discussion. So, if you look at EMS systems across the country, a lot of these are publicly available. So, similarly to the behavioral health dashboard, which you can now access on the office of the mayor's site, we hope these are publicly available as well. So, right now, that is not the case, but as Chief Matt's mentioned, we will integrate these into the Power BI dashboard. So, without further ado, we're going to talk about some very engaging clinical metrics here. So, the first thing is, if you look at stroke, stroke, I'm happy to say we, we as a system do quite well. A stroke mimic, a lot of times, is something that presents as a stroke but is not one. And so, one of the things we typically do is get blood sugars on every patient, and that's something we do quite well. We document the stroke scale very well. And the other question is, in our system that's so complicated, some patients are experiencing a specific type of stroke, which benefits from transport to a specialty center. So, if, for example, you have a significant stroke burden and you require administration of a particular, a particular medicine or clot retrieval, there are only three hospitals in the city, actually now four, that will provide that service. And so, we want to make sure that our EMS professionals can do that. And I'm happy to report that most of the time, we were able to transport them to a thrombectomy-capable center. We do have a challenge with the transport within 20 minutes. Obviously, a stroke is a time-sensitive emergency, but you can imagine the baseline lack of recognition of stroke symptoms, plus the lack of recognition of dispatch, and then you couple that with challenges with ambulance availability, sometimes it's hard to get off the scene in 20 minutes. But overall, the key thing here is to trend it. And so, to your point, when we want to look at strategies that are working, we look at it from a monthly basis, and one of the neat things about First Watch, as you see on the bottom axis, if it was a little bit larger, you can track these by month. So, we can look at overall trends, which I think is very important to understand how it is that we're doing. If you look at chest pain, so we do, for all of the patients that receive chest pain, we do a fairly good job of applying the 12 lead. Again, this is a big challenge in that we want to recognize a time-sensitive emergency, and so, how do we, we talk about this response time window, and a national standard is, you know, if somebody is experiencing chest pain, which quite frankly, we don't even meet this metric even in emergency departments, but if somebody says, "I have chest pain," they call 911, what is the percentage of the time that we can get a 12 lead to those patients, which is a more accurate picture of a potential heart attack? And there's definitely some room for improvement there. Now, we do have a program where our EMTs, our EMTs can actually, and that is the, with all due respect, a, not necessarily a lower level, but it's an entry-level EMS provider. The paramedic is the ALS provider, which is advanced life support, which can actually interpret EKGs. So, there's a challenge, and we can get EMTs to actually get the 12 lead, but again, matching the patient to the EMT with the 12 lead, sometimes that results in a less-than-satisfactory response. So, that metric has been hovering around about 50 to 60%, less than 10 minutes of the time, and that would be ideal. In terms of cardiac arrest, this is where we have, we'll talk about some of the response metrics, but this is one where, this looks at the entirety of the system. So, we will document initial rhythm, our advanced airway metrics. Now, sometimes as we compile these, the number of arrests that get, a number of cardiac arrests that get an advanced airway, that's a smaller segment of the population, so you'll see, you'll see the metric go up and down, but what we're looking for is an upward trend. We are also trending to make sure that we have a good airway and good airway practices. We want to obtain end-tidal CO2 documentation. And basically, as we exhale, if we're perfusing and we have blood that is actually going to our lungs, we're providing good CPR, we should be able to document the exchange of carbon dioxide. So, from a clinical perspective, these are very important metrics. And when, when we actually have survival, so if somebody is resuscitated in the back of the ambulance, we do get a 12 lead and transport them to the appropriate hospital. So, clinically, I think Baltimore City and our fire department excels. You'll see when I go over some of the survival-based metrics, that's where I believe there is a ton of opportunity for community engagement, and that is something I think the fire department cannot do alone. So, here what we have, we're looking at what's called a CARES database, and this is a national database. So, we compare our times to national benchmarks of other systems that do this, and you can see that in terms of the call of 911 to arrival, you can see that we're a little bit shifted. So, on the left side is your EMS CAD times from Baltimore City, and you can see we have a fairly large amount of them that take longer than eight to nine minutes. What we'd like to do is shift that curve a little bit more to the left, so that the time it takes for a 911 person or a 911 professional to arrive at the scene of a cardiac arrest is a little bit lower. We're doing, I think, fairly okay on dispatch to arrival, but this is, I think, a very collaborative issue, meaning that you have to have people that recognize the cardiac arrest, you have to have the 911 operator that actually recognizes the cardiac arrest, and then you have to have the dispatcher, which also does the right code. And so, as a medical director, when I look at this, I would love to see a system in which we have a unified communication center, and you won't be surprised to hear that that conversation is, influences everything else, right? Right now, we have a 911 communication center that is separate from fire dispatch, and you can imagine, if you're trying to narrow the time and you're trying to narrow variability, to have a call taker process a call and then move it over to a separate city office, and then hope they recognize it in time to send the ambulance, this is a common challenge in I think a lot of cities, but one of the biggest, I think, discussions that this tells me is that this conversation about a integrated 911, integrated fire communication center is something that's very worthwhile, because these times are directly related to survival. So, as we improve into population health, and as we expand into medically-informed dispatch, hopefully, we'll be able to consolidate some things there too. There's a lot of words over here, but I will break this down for you in just a little bit. This is the, this is the cardiac arrest registry to enhance survival, and what this kind of shows is what is the overall health of your, you know, what is the overall health of your system? Now, you'll notice that our overall survival, so if somebody has a cardiac arrest, our overall survival rates are not, they're pretty low. We excel over PG counties, so our overall arrest rates are about 2.1%. I think what is much more important is if you look at the number called UTEAM bystander. So, about the third, the third or fourth down, you have UTEAM bystander. What that number says is that what's the percentage of survival of those patients that have a cardiac arrest that is witnessed? So, you need, for every, to walk out of a hospital from a cardiac arrest, it's not about the rapidness of the ambulance, although that's important. It's about, do you recognize it? Do people in Baltimore provide CPR? So, you have a witnessed arrest, a rhythm is shocked, somebody provides CPR, and then we actually get return of spontaneous circulation. And the reason why I drill that home is because there is no more cost-effective intervention that you can perform for cardiac arrest other than bystander CPR, and that is something I think that has been quite challenged in the era of COVID. I think when we talk about community engagement, that is a topic for not only the Department of Health, but MONC and all these other agencies, because if you don't engage the community, it frankly doesn't matter. And if you look at all of our calls, the vast majority of them, right, look at our, look at our bystander sort of CPR rate is very low. It's less than 20%, right? So, if you look at our bystander intervention rate, we really want to be on the, we really want to be much more where Baltimore County, PG County, if you look at Howard County, they're upwards of 40%. And if you don't have bystander CPR, quite frankly, you could have me on an ambulance, you could have Chief Matt on an ambulance, although I wouldn't recommend that, but it takes a little while to get everybody familiar, but the cardiac arrest survival rates are not going to be great. So, I emphasize this because this is a community metric, right? It's a clinical metric, but it really is about the community. And what that tells me, when you have a bystander intervention rate of 19.4%, it means that people aren't doing CPR. And when you look at our 911 dispatch, the most common reasons are people refuse, or it's a third party. We have a lot of that, because if your cardiac arrests are due to overdose, what we have a lot of the time is, I mean, I can't tell you how often this happens, where people say, "Somebody is not breathing." We don't know whether it's an opioid overdose, we don't know whether it's a cardiac arrest, and in a majority of cases, there will not be the provision of CPR. Sometimes it will be Narcan, but once you're at the point where you're not breathing, or you have a cardiac arrest, you need intervention. So, I think we've kind of echoed this enough, but, but these are statistics that I think have been negatively impacted by COVID, and I think are negatively impacted by the low rates of bystander CPR. So, we look forward to improving that as well. Those are the clinical metrics. I think the good news that we talk about is that we will be integrating them in a way that is transparent and accessible. Our behavioral health metrics are already online. As a matter of fact, I can probably show that to the group while I'm wrapping this up over here. I forget the Google address. Let's see, anyone, I'll try to pull that for you. But I'm really optimistic that what we are doing, what we are doing is, I think, a good job in terms of making metrics happen and tracking them so that we can have some, some good results. So, thanks for your time, and I will try to get the dashboard up there. There it is. That's the actual real-time dashboard that you can access right now.
Thank you. Councilman Porter.
I did have a quick question about just community engagement. I know the fire department has started kind of doing more community engagement. What strategies are you looking at to kind of integrate? I mean, you're shaking your head because it's very true, like to get CPR in the schools, to get CPR in community based organizations. Like how, how, how are you all integrating some of the issues, not issues, but areas of improvement into the communication strategies from the fire department, like different community outreach events?
Hands only CPR is one of the number one community outreach events that we do. Historically, prior to COVID, they used to have them every event, Artscape, anything you can think of, AFRAM, they had them everywhere. We're trying to get back to that point right now. They're actively bringing on new people to assist with community outreach. And we're going to directly target those based on the information we're finding from our data. That's the number one thing. We're also going after, we have some bilingual and multilingual people that are also in assistance us with that. The problem in general is urban environments like Baltimore City and PG, CPR is just a no-no. Back then, we had to do mouth to mouth and CPR. You could never get anybody to do it. Trying to explain to them it's simple, it's fast. We're also targeting the schools. At one point, I think it was-
It used to be a module in the school.
It's required for high school. They were really, I think we lose if we don't start as early as we can. To me, it's middle school and work your way-
Yeah, I was just about to say that, yeah.
Middle school and work your way up. Introduce it in elementary school, work your way up through middle school. We started to target that, but then we had the whole pandemic thing where you're not getting people in, you know, face to face.
Yeah.
We got to turn a corner from that. And it's not just Baltimore City, it's everywhere around the state, the country. It's, it's bad. We really have to make a real-
And the only reason why I bring that up is because we are seeing more and more when, when youth and young adults are playing sports and they're just like collapsing on the field and team members are not knowing what to do. And so that's a prime example of like, making sure that we integrated not only the high school model, but even the middle school model. I mean, we've seen campaigns that have started within the school systems that allow, allow, you know, for true behavior change where the youth and young adult are influencing their family. Recycling is one, tobacco and smoking is one.
True.
And so I hope that, you know, you all are thinking through those strategies to integrate like the school system and youth recreation again.
Yeah, there is a mini med school coming up in August where it's a neighborhood in, I believe it's South Baltimore. And I apologize because my calendar-
It's the Cures Program.
So I can't recall.
It's the UMD Cures Program.
Oh, well, it may be, and I apologize for not knowing, but that's what we're doing, we will be there doing a demonstration of hands on CPR. I think you're absolutely right. The re-engagement of community, community outreach under the guise of population health. I think at the height of that program, Baltimore City Fire was able to train in one year, I think it was 5,000 city residents. And that's an example where you can look at direct improvements, right? So if we, once we stand a program like up, or program light that up and we leverage city expertise, we can look at, you know, whether there's improvement in bystander CPR rates, which I think is very important because recognition is a challenge that, you know, goes across the whole spectrum of emergency health delivery. So I think as we reorganize and we talk about expansion, personally, I would, I would say that is a high priority in terms of bystander education, working with schools and even city employees, we found was a decent, I think they comprised a decent sort of number of the people that we trained, so.
So I'm thinking more non-traditional. So like youth recreation, sports programs, you know, having some sort of, well leveraging some sort of like, if you, if you have so many people trained on your, your, your program, you're able to get, you know, some sort of leverage or incentive from the city. Like really thinking through how we can get more people non-traditionally impacted by these programs. And so I'm thinking youth recreation and sports programs. I'm thinking, you know, our, our pools, you know, like really kind of like, not just the school system. Like there's so many ways that youth and young adults are interacting with city agencies that are just low hanging fruit.
Yeah, I would, I would also suggest, just to kind of piggyback on to Councilman Porter's point, being, being targeted in that as well. Knowing what some of the leading causes for cardiac arrests are and trying to find opportunities to get into those sort of groups of people. If we know that it's drug overdose, working with the nonprofits that are frequently working with those folks, I would imagine a lot of times they are already CPR certified. But nonetheless, we should be doubling down there and reminding folks how to do that training. Also for seniors, where we know folks have complications later on in life. So, you know, that would be an awesome opportunity. So one, of course, getting more people, city employees as well. But, but also really targeting those that are most likely to come in, come into contact with folks who are likely to, you know, deal with this issue.
We have that data. So we did during, we actually published on this a couple of times. And we found that there were significant barriers, but the majority of cardiac arrests occurs either the workspace or in the home. And there's a certain amount that are very difficult because they occur, you know, on the street and those are the unwitnessed arrests. So that's where I think we found, in addition to your point about non-traditional sort of avenues, we found out that hosting these events at community engagement, whether it was Be More Healthy, AFRAM, or a variety of those, was an effective way to outreach. And we found also with that data is we had a lot of representation across the ranges of age. But that's not only, I want to be very clear that I, although the fire department should be engaged there, that is not only a fire department centric thing. I mean CPR, there's no certification anymore. You could quite literally go online and it's a minute and a half. The challenge of getting people to view that and then actually perform CPR is sort of beyond what we can do. But to your point, there's lots of opportunities to raise awareness on hands on practice. And, and I absolutely look forward to, to engaging in that space.
Yeah, we actually targeted, I remember when we did the last initiatives, we actually targeted the senior high rises and, you know, the senior buildings to help people, and it was, it was well received. But we got to get around the term from the COVID is a problem. COVID hit the brakes on everything and that was a big, big problem, so.
And the reason why I say youth and young adult recreational programs is because you already have a captive audience there that cares about, like, I don't know about you all, but these little people that are football players are diehard. And so they want, you know, to, they want to play football. And so not only showing them, not only the technicality of like how to play football, but also like the safety aspect of football. Like you want to save your, your teammate's life one day. And so being able to do that and having that captive audience, I think that's a low hanging fruit that, you know, many people, you know, and not just fire department centric. I believe this for a lot of social issues that we're experiencing.
Absolutely. I, yeah, you can, you can always loop in things like overdose treatment and a lot of this is public access, that's where I would say.
And I'm curious, what is the difference between Baltimore City's population and Prince George's County and Baltimore County? Why, why do those two counties respectively have more intervention than we do? Is it more training? Is it the population? Is it the, what, I'm very curious about that.
PG is very close to us, right?
PG is very close to us.
No, I'm talking with regard to the, the-
Yeah.
Utstein, yeah. We're very similar. It has to do with neighborhoods, you know, population, I guess, I mean.
So I, you, this is a, this is a difficult, we, I mean, I'm very transparent about this. So if you look at the, if you look at the CPR data and you look at communities such as ours, like Detroit and other urban underserved communities, there is historical lack of willingness. And we saw this in the data, whether it's fear, whether it's fear of communicable disease, fear of liability and access. So the, the, with some exceptions, CPR bystanders rates in urban communities are historically challenged. As opposed when you look to other communities where, in a suburban area, where people, it's more family occurrence, there is more of a willingness to perform. So there's less of a barrier. And so that's the difference between your 20% bystander intervention rate, where we hover beyond, we run anywhere between 20 and 25% to a more sort of incentivized and engaged 40% rate we see in a lot of the suburban counties. Seattle has been historically extremely good at doing this. And they're, they also have bystander CPR programs, which are, to your point, in every single area of that community, in the schools, in workplaces. So we can do some things with the penetrance and the availability of training. I think there's also some challenges when we look at urban environments and the willingness to do so. Because we have that data too, where our 911 dispatchers will say, can you do XYZ? And there's typically a refusal to perform that, even though it's hands only. And we've gone to that even at dispatch. Our dispatchers very well will instruct in hands only CPR.
But, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah.
But I will push back a little bit on that because that, I mean, what, I mean, I know it was not intended, but what's being insinuated is that urban environments are just not, they're not, in my opinion, being trained well. So like, the way that you communicate to, you know, my people in Baltimore City versus people that you're going to be doing, you know, people that you're going to be talking through in Seattle, that's a, that's a communications approach. That's simply not, that's simply not a lack of willingness to do it. It's simply just, how do we get the information to the individuals in a way that they understand, in a way that that builds community rapport? That, that is what public health is. And so like, you know, I often kind of push back when, when health promotion programs are like, oh, you know, this is different from an urban versus suburban environment. While it could be different, the communication strategies that you're implementing and executing are going to have to be different. And oftentimes, you're seeing those communication strategies kind of being just swathed across the board. And it's not, it's not, it's not like being picked up. It's not being picked up.
You're, you're absolutely correct. I think that, you know, this shouldn't, it doesn't dissuade people from doing it. I think a particular challenge, I think, in this jurisdiction is the, you know, we've seen if you don't know somebody, that is a, a big, a big disincentive in terms of the people who we surveyed in Baltimore.
Okay.
So if you look at a, if you look at the cross section of our population that is found in arrest, such as the overdose in the alley or the person that is just discovered, there is a, there is a difficult sort of barrier to bridge, if you will. And I agree with you, there's lots of communication. And our job is to extend that to the population, you know, where they live.
Yeah.
And, and we will continue to explore, I think, all of those because for the benefit of the entirety of the population. I totally agree.
Yeah, and it's a benefit, but, yeah, it's a benefit to the population. But I'm talking about, you know, even when we're talking about schools of public health, it's a very different frame from Johns Hopkins versus Morgan State University.
Sure.
Very different frame of reference, very different communication strategies. And so like, I would encourage you to mimic and partner with institutions that match the, the communities that you are serving. Because you're going to be able to build those types of rapport and community engagement that you're looking for so that we can truly save lives and not just simply say like, you know, we just have barriers between your urban and suburban environment, so.
I'm going to shift gears a little bit. Can you talk to us a little bit about your vision for how the new EMS bureau will be structured within the organization?
So with regard to EMS as a whole, that population health?
I understand we're going to have a new, a new bureau with different units assigned to it.
Right, there'll be an assistant chief of EMS as well as two deputy chiefs, one dedicated to the day to day operations. The other one will handle the administrative portion of the day to day. And then of course, below them, we have four battalion chiefs that serve the field operations on a shift basis, as well as two battalion chiefs that work on varying duties. Like for instance, one covers, one of the battalion chiefs covers training, quality assurance, the other one handles billing, which is pretty substantial, as well as some programs with innovation. And then we go down to, you want to go down to where we're going from there?
Yeah, please.
So what we're doing right now is, we were doing a lot of mobile integrated healthcare. We're trying to convert that mobile integrated healthcare and bring it into the auspice of population health. Not just targeting on, you know, like Dr. Lawner and myself doing a treat and release call in West Baltimore only. Not doing just a transitional home to, hospital to home program, but trying to cover the vast array of different programs out that we need to address, which is our high utilizers. What do we need to bridge the gap with those high utilizers? You know, we're looking with vaccinations outreach. We're already vaccinating our home bound and vulnerable population. That's not going any way anytime soon. We're also looking at some alternative destinations, alternative treatments. We're looking at clinician referral. If somebody's on the street and they identify a low acuity or low priority call, that would be appropriate. Being able to call those resources in. One of the problems we have with newer programs is change is hard. Change is hard on, on the public and change is hard on our people. We need to get people out there to get up in everybody's face. And my people included, hey, no, this isn't a perp call. Just because you've been going to the ER for the last 25 or 30 years, this guy really needs to go to an urgent care center and needs to be referred to something like that. So we're trying to get that, one, that's going to teach the public and two, it's going to teach our own people moving forward. Go ahead, Ben.
Just to expand on that vision, and this is where, and I think we've been very consistent in this too. And I always appreciate the opportunity for more visibility. But the vast majority of the fire department resources right now are reactive, right? So you have 185,000 calls with 90,000 transports, which we have talked about exhaustedly. So any, at any given day and any given point in time, the vast majority of your resources are dedicated to deployment and reacting to emergencies. So when we talk about this concept, to get a firefighter and to say, well, how do we engage with other communities to meet them where they are and communicate? And that, we need people to run that down. And so I think what we're talking about is a fire department that is much more responsive. So as opposed to responding to the emergencies, we're having a 911 system and by extension, an EMS system that actually looks at the right care, at the right time, via the right place. And it also looks at the social determinants of health so we can begin to undo some of this downstream reflexive, let's respond to the emergency, let's wait at the hospital and let's continue to talk about some of the challenges we have. So as Chief Matt said, you're going to have the response capacity that's preserved and augmented. And then you're going to have a population health division, which talks about community education, behavioral health diversion, high utilizers, substance use, harm reduction. But I think to build a lot of those inroads, this department, I think, has historically been quite challenged because a lot of the, a lot of the operational stuff is dedicated to immediate response. And I am not suggesting there's no room for efficiency and streamlining. I am suggesting that it would be, it would be very, very good to progress to a 911 system that is not only reactive but proactive and looks at some of the mitigation strategies in the front end. So that is the stuff we hope to report and I think hope to continue to refine.
Some of the other changes that we have, we expanded QA, like Dr. Lawner was saying, are reactive versus proactive. Current staffing, any quality assurance, quality improvement, is one captain and one lieutenant and one contract employee.
One doctor.
And one doctor, he's got to tell me that repeatedly. But anyway, the, the end of the day, we do over 250,000 EMS reports a year. Who's going to look at that? We need to be not working, oh, there's a complaint came in from so and so. That's, right now, we're reactive. We get a complaint, we handle it. The idea is to have lieutenant on each shift. It's proactively working with that shift, with the problems that are in that shift and taking the different trainings and different problem areas that Dr. Lawner identifies down to the individual provider. Training, we got to beef up. Part of the manual memorandum understanding requires us to do on duty training now. I need more people in there to treat and train people on duty every day to give, to get the problems like Dr. Lawner was talking about with innovations or EKGs. We got to get that down to the low level provider. And this is some of the ways that we're going to be able to do that. One of the other areas that's important, I know you're going to love it, is data. We were able to leverage and get three data people in to help us to be able to research and figure out what we don't know, what are the metrics we need to be looking at? So we can have not just a Jake Meider in a room, but have a few people doing that proactively. So that's the direction we're heading. We're actively writing those now, those job descriptions to get them through and get those positions. But I'm not in a position to put like, to show everything right now. So that's true.
Appreciate it. So what I'm hearing is an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure in so many words.
You can probably quantify that in terms of life years saved as well. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And it sounds like we are still trying to figure out how to do some of that prevention, that proactive work, given we are largely reactive at the moment.
I was just going to say, the most important thing, Dr. Lawner had stressed from the beginning, we can't have people working in silos. One of the most important things we're doing is bridging the nursing and the 911 center contract with our population health initiatives. We're trying to bridge all these different things around together so everybody's talking to each other and we can know, hey, I need help here. Hey, this, I can help you with this. We're trying to improve communication between all the different parts, at least in this EMS system.
I might also suggest, going to my question a little bit earlier around how we coordinate with the health department and the police department, how we can leverage some of the health department's resources to do some of this work. It doesn't necessarily always have to be the fire department doing the training or doing the outreach or the preparation or even some of the data work. I think we should, where we can't, where we can't do internally, we should find ways to partner, is essentially my thought.
Completely agree.
Any, any other questions?
I, I have something totally unrelated, so when this conversation's over, if, if I may.
Okay. Any other questions? Please, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you remind me what functions the fire department currently has at the former Baltimore Sun building at 501 North Calvert?
So what functions are at Calvert Street currently?
Yeah.
Well, there's, of course, there's Police Central District and War and Apprehensive Task Force from the fire department side.
Just fire.
It's, it's the EMS administration, EMS training, and then across the hall from me is Office of Emergency Management, which is all of the, I think, maybe some of you have been over there to see the, that response. We're, we're across the hall from one another, and then down the hall is City Watch. In that corner of the building, it's EMS administration, EMS training, Office of Emergency Management.
So EMS, EMS training, and, and OEM?
Mm-hmm.
How many, how many total FTEs is that? Plus or minus? I'm, I'm not going to quote you on this, I'm probably-
Thirty to forty on both sides at a shot, maybe, off the top of my head.
And then-
And I might be overestimating what-
That's fine.
Chief Wallace has, but-
Do we know what other functions within fire are, are planning to move to that facility?
I'd have to defer that to someone else to find out when, when they're planning on doing that. I don't know that part of the plan.
Okay. If you could follow up with me, because I am extremely concerned about the city's plans, not the fire department, but the city's plans, to move forward expeditiously with that project, specifically concentrating our public safety resources, office resources in, in one place. So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please, keep microphone, microphone, please.
Ju- just fire. Yep, yep. I just want to get a complete picture for all of the agencies, although it's really just fire and police, but, so, thank you. I'm sure I'm going to get a much more efficient response out of fire, as opposed to the other agencies in that universe, of which there were a total of two. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, we're going to go into recess. I want to thank you guys for, of course, doing thorough work on the data side. I always appreciate that. One of my favorite things. And I will see you guys in the next quarter.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.